Good evening, I'd like to call to order our school committee meeting. It is February 23rd, 2015. It is 7:00 PM. Thank you everyone for being here this evening. I know it was cold and blustery outside. As reminded, this meeting is being both audio and videotaped. And if we could all please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, we have our roll call starting. Elizabeth Marcy-Boucher.
Gregory Thompson.
Rich Fuchero.
Deirdre Mayeau.
Gordon Smith, superintendent of schools.
Phil Fonseca.
Oh, I'm sorry. Terry O'Leary, assistant superintendent for business. Kathy Salo, the recording secretary.
Jack Woodhead, student representative.
Okay, great, thanks. Alright, we have the approval of some minutes. We have our February 5th, 2015 regular session, meeting minutes.
I move to approve the February 5th, 2015 regular session meeting minutes.
Okay, motion's been made?
Second.
And seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed nay. That carries forward, five to zero.
I abstained, so it's gone.
Oh, thank you, I'm sorry. Four to zero, yes.
At this time, Ms. Chair, I'd like to amend our agenda. We move 5.2.1 the quarterly budget report up to 5.1.0.
Okay, so a motion has been made?
I'll second.
And seconded, any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed nay. And that carries forward, five to zero. Okay, so we have our committee and subcommittee communications. So, Beth, if you want to start?
Just, right now, we're doing the bus negotiations and they seem to be going well. And a few more meetings.
Good, alright, break, do anything you can.
Another good, successful unit negotiation meeting today. We're in great shape with that group, good working group, and we're getting close to them, we're hopeful.
Good, thank you.
Just want to say it was a fun day, Leaf, seeing some people there.
Oh, yeah. It seemed like forever ago.
I know, right?
Yeah, it does.
I felt uncomfortable wearing Doc Down's black and white colors, but I did after still wear that, so I went along with it.
When in Rome, right?
Alright, Bill, do you have anything to add?
Laura Pine Valley Educational Collaborative, students of the month for January. We have Marie Sullivan from East Long Meadow, culinary arts one. Very good, congratulations to her. Continued good work. Again, great time at Leaf, congratulations to all the grant winners. It was a great night, and I concur with, you know, Mr. Fuchero about the black and white, but hey, you gotta do what you gotta do for the school. It's all about the kids, we get it. But yeah, great time. Had the opportunity to attend a couple of girls' basketball games, as well as senior night for the men's, for the boys' basketball. Congratulations to all the graduates, and best of luck in the future.
Perfect. And Beth, did you have anything to add?
Yeah, first, you know, today was obviously the first day back after winter break, which is good to be back. And then, March 6th and 7th is our Spartana. So, if you guys want to get, you know, want to go, that's when that is. And then, winter sports is coming to a close here shortly, which means spring sports are starting up, I believe, in March. So.
Feels like spring.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
And are you gonna be in Spartana?
I'm not, I don't think so. So, I know.
I was supposed to do a dance.
I was supposed to be in the senior boys' dance, and then I missed some meetings, and then, yeah, I got too far behind, so.
It's terrible.
It's a bummer, but.
But you're working on a play, though, right?
Yeah, exactly, I'm gonna go up there and, yeah, exactly.
My daughter is Tweedle Dee.
Oh, really?
Yes. The Alice in Wonderland, St. Michael's Players.
There you go.
What, the assistant director, associate director, is that what you're doing?
No, no.
I thought you were working on it all.
No.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, I thought you were joking.
I thought it was you. Jack, my fault.
No, I'm, no, I am a terrible actor, a terrible singer, so.
I saw your name was mentioned with the group, and I know how talented you are, so I assumed.
Oh, no, I appreciate it.
My apologies.
No.
But anyway, St. Michael's Players, yeah, Alice in Wonderland.
There you go.
Coming in.
Especially with your daughter's.
That's right, there you go.
And is that any?
That's it.
That's it. And the only thing I just want to add is that this Wednesday night, I know it's gonna be too late for recording, is the student safety awareness night.
Youth Safety. Youth Safety. Safety Night, and actually, that's gonna be part of our presentation as we get in. Plug, and Holmes received a Blackboard Connect call tonight inviting them, and it's up on our webpage. And we hope that it generates not only interest for Wednesday evening, but interest for other evenings similar to Wednesday's discussion.
Great, perfect. Alright, so we're done with that. We're gonna move on to our, this would be the opportunity for visitors to address the committee. But looking out to the audience, I don't see any, so we're going to move on. And we're down to our 5.2.1, which we moved up. So, Terry, you ready?
So, you have the quarterly budget report in your packet, and I will just want to highlight a few areas that are mentioned in this. Our budget this year remains to be pretty stable, with sufficient funds to cover some unexpended expenditures such as reductions in grants, and also an upgrade in software that we are making. One of the areas of the budget that's been very problematic this year is transportation. We've had a lot of expensive repairs to buses, shortage of drivers, and other issues that have resulted in some deficits. There is also a higher-than-usual expense for homeless transportation this year.
I was gonna ask you about that. Where did that come from?
Well, we've always had homeless transportation for years. I mean, you know, but just this year, there seems to be, some years it's higher than other years.
We're not reimbursed for that.
Well, we are, there is a new reimbursement that was enacted a few years ago, but it goes directly to the town.
Yeah.
So, we have the expense.
School fund's not reimbursed.
We get the expense, yeah.
Right. We've also experienced some grant cuts, and earlier in the year, a full-day kindergarten grant had a cut, and also, the Metco grant had a $4,400 cut back in November. And we just got the word today that we're gonna have another $14,999 cut in that grant. So, that is not included in the transfers that you see, because we just got that information today.
Those are part of the nine C cuts.
Part of the nine C cuts, that's correct. So, I will just go through this transfer that covers some of these deficits that we talked about, but also covers the restructuring of this Reddycur software, which is our student database. And this upgrade will enhance the programs utilized by the middle and high school, and will improve the state reporting SIF functions. And also, for the elementary schools, we'll bring, be able to schedule their buildings electronically and have an electronic report card. So, it's a pretty big upgrade that will benefit all of the schools. So, the transfers that you see from these accounts, district-wide repair or maintenance equipment, $5,000; district-wide maintenance of equipment miscellaneous, $2,991; Meadowbrook guidance salary, $9,356; Meadowbrook early childhood teacher salary, $7,300; high school teacher salary, $7,700; district-wide transportation fuel, $10,000; district-wide transportation summer contracted services; and LPVAC special education tuition, $11,303. For a total of $68,650. And those transfers are going into.
Can I just mention one thing before?
Sure.
Because I'm sure that you're listening to salary and you're saying. The salary reductions coincide with us receiving a grant, one in terms of the high schools, the academic support grant, because we never count that that money is going to come in. And then, the Meadowbrook is the community.
Partnership.
Partnership grant. So, when those grants come in, we can offset, in those cases, salary line items, and then utilize that money, in this case, to transfer it somewhere else.
And a lot of, a lot of times, the salary accounts, also, any savings are based on people that happen to be on unpaid leave, you know, going to unpaid leave and create some savings. So, these transfers to district-wide homeless transportation, $24,000; district-wide transportation's parts and supplies, $20,000; district-wide professional development, $9,650. And that is for the training for the upgrade of the software. And the district-wide data processing, which is the expense of the upgrade for this year, is $15,000. So, that is the $68,650. I did also just want to mention that earlier in the year, we made transfers to move expenses from the athletic revolving account to the budget. And at the end of January, the athletic revolving account is currently in good standing, and with careful monitoring, will continue to operate in the black. And then, the budget for the 2015-16 year should be developed before June, so that limits and expectations are put into place, so that we can continue that trend. And so then, as Mr. Fuchero likes me to mention, that this is a snapshot time, and that things have changed probably as, since I wrote this, as we found out with the grant reduction today. Any questions?
Clear as always.
Alright, so, we were discussing, do we need, will we need to make a motion on the transfers?
Yes.
Any questions on the transfers?
Make a motion to approve the transfers as specified by our assistant superintendent for business.
Okay, motion's been made?
I'll second.
And seconded, any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed nay. That carries forward, five to zero. And then, give me the separate motion on.
Motion to accept the assistant superintendent for business's report, quarterly report.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded, any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed nay. Hearing none, that carries forward, five to zero. And at this point, we're just gonna dismiss Terry, she has some things to attend to this evening.
We'll see you tomorrow night appropriations, Miss O'Leary.
Good luck, thanks. Alright, so we can move on to the superintendent's report.
Okay, tonight, we have the start of our mid-cycle review. So, we have not only the district's mid-cycle, but we also have the high school and the middle school mid-cycle presentations. And we're gonna put them up on the three screens. And we did test this quite a bit, so we're hoping that all three screens stay with us throughout the night. We'll start with the district mid-cycle, and Mr. Neer and I will be going through the slides and splitting up the work as we go through. So, basically, what we're looking to do with any mid-cycle is just to see, based on our SMART goals, which we presented earlier in the fall, where are we at this point as a district? And then, as you continue through the schools, specifically, where are our schools on achieving those goals? And at this point, are there items that we should be revising? Are there action steps that we need to look at, maybe adding? And as we assess all of that, we can change plans, because at this point, we're in the middle of the school year. All of our goals started with our theory of action. Simply put, if we're looking at strengthening core instruction, we always want to talk about and establish a safe, nurturing, respectful learning environment, and for that matter, a working environment. If we can develop that with collaborative leadership across the district, then we should be seeing as a result that we have students who possess strong 21st century skills. And by the time they leave us, graduating in the 12th grade, our students should have strong communication skills, the ability to work collaboratively, think critically, and problem solve. And that brings us to our first goal, district SMART goal number one. I'll hand off.
So, I know you have this in front of you. The first goal is all around standard-based instruction and what that looks like for our curriculum. I'm not gonna read it to you, because you have that ahead of you. Some of the key action steps for goal one were around developing and revising our curriculum units, also providing professional development to curriculum writers throughout the school year, and some targeted work on math during the summer. And then, the technology leaders, we also did some training with the rollout of new technology for staff. So, this slide kind of shows you, gosh, I hope you can see that from your seats up there, where we are on some of these actions. And all of them are on track, and so, I've given you a quick summary of what the next steps would be. So, as far as curriculum committees and the workshops that we're doing for our curriculum writers, they've been meeting as needed throughout the year. K to five is meeting on specific dates. For six through 12, what we did is we opened it up for them to determine when and if they needed extended time outside of the classroom to complete the work. So, that's on a one-on-one basis, depending on the department and the different structures in the buildings. And I'll talk to you more about that if you have questions. Next, coming up.
Now, this is all assessments that'd be completed by June 2015. That's all assessments K through 12.
Will be, right, we will have assessments developed for all content areas where specified.
Common assessments. Right.
Yep.
So, all school builders are on track to have that done?
Correct.
All subject areas, all grade levels.
They have been working diligently, yes, to get that done.
And in some cases, when you're talking about unique assessments, such as, say, in music, it's gonna be different than the comprehensive assessments that we might be building in English and math and social studies, yeah.
So, I'll just let you take a look at what those next steps say, and if you have questions for them. Primarily, it's, we're gonna have a summer session specifically on math that we're gonna organize for a week-long institute, depending on the grade spans. We're looking at possibly 25 slots, so that might be targeted to certain grade spans right now. Our curriculum has been implemented, and it's developed in Atlas, Rubicon Atlas. What we did this past summer is we moved all of those units into Google Docs, so that everyone has access to them. I'll show you what that looks like on the next slide. And then, we continued to train and provide PD for technology. The buildings have done a great job as a full group. We determined at least two days for PD for that, and then the buildings have gone above and beyond internally, so that's great.
I can tell you that I'm on the collaborative committee, Mr. Neer, and just K through 12. And the staff there highlighted how successful this technology rollout was, truly successful.
Completely differentiated, which was a full-team effort in the design, and really, the principals have been leading it since then, and it's been great to provide staff.
Very positive feedback, you should know that.
So, I just want to show you what we mean by we're sharing things. And, you know, you keep hearing Google, and we're using Google, here's how we're using it. You know, so all of our staff meetings and PD minutes and agendas are housed in Google folders for staff to access, department documents, anything that we're working on, and then also our curriculum. So, I'm just gonna share with you real quick.
So, this is, we took our units out of Atlas, and we're putting them into the Google Docs. So, this allows all our teachers to be able to get at these units.
So, you can see these groups, it says unknown, these are all the school groups. So, every school has access to these. They're organized by, let's see if I can expand that for you. They're organized by, by schools. And if we just pop into one, they are then organized by department. And then, within each department, you have every course. And then, within the course, they have every unit that's taught for that particular course. So, teachers who are teaching Algebra I.
We populated all this?
I'm sorry?
We populated all this?
We, meaning, yes.
Not us, I mean.
Listen, we're all this together. Nice job.
I couldn't put you in that, so I was kind of a nightmare.
If you remember from the last few years, we've been working and developing these units in Atlas. However, we did not have licensure for all of our teaching staff to get into Atlas. And so, it certainly helped to build our units, but now, by moving it over, which was an incredible amount of work, and Mr. Neer did.
That curriculum office.
Almost all of it, if not all of it. All our teachers have access. So, now, they can see these units, and you were gonna take us through.
I'm just gonna show you the format. We've talked about UVD, just so you can see what the format is. So, everyone has access to this, no one has editing rights. What happens if they want to edit a unit, they have to contact the department head, who emails me and says, "We need to work on this." They still work in Rubicon for now, Rubicon Atlas. And then, if they've updated, they let me know, and I replace the old map with the new one. Because you don't want, just, so it starts off with the standards at the top. I'm just gonna scan, so you can see the framework of it. It then talks about how they're going to assess for those standards. And then, you have the big ideas. This is what the major takeaways are for the unit. And then, the essential questions, which are ways to engage the students. As the unit progresses, students should be able to answer these questions more sophisticated throughout the unit. So, they should go from more simplified answers to a higher understanding towards the end.
So, you're in a math unit here?
Yep.
And can people see that?
Yep. And then, after that, you have your content knowledge, what will the students know, be able to do, and then skills. We've linked Bloom's taxonomy right here, so it's a live link. So, teachers who are looking at this can link right into Bloom's, so they can plan for scaffolding across the taxonomy. And that's pretty much how they're all set up. There's an area for them also to provide links. So, you see the resource section, and those are live links, so that the teachers can access different things that the writers have included into the units.
Can you just go back to the top of that page? So, I noticed right there, we're to solve an equation, it's chapter two.
Yep.
So, it even paces down to like week three.
Yes, so one of the documents that is in everyone's, every course, is the scope and sequence. So, you can get an overview of the name of the unit, with how long they should take. But then, when you drill into the units, it also tells you, this is a three-week unit, it should have, it should start at week two, and, yeah.
Edwin, it says move, that these are being moved to Edwin.
Yes, sir.
That's coming up, okay, sorry.
Good segue.
Good segue to go to.
The next goal is all around common assessments.
Last November, the last November meeting, you did also mention action steps, something about district learning walks that you did not follow, that's not mentioned yet out tonight. Are we still doing those and all that?
We are still doing those. We just wanted to focus in on some key steps, because if you saw the full SMART goal document, there's like 10 action steps. So, we're just highlighting the key work that is really infiltrated with a large number of stakeholders.
And what you'll hear from the buildings, those learning walks are taking place and have begun to happen in the buildings. And Mr. Neer and I get invited as guests, which is new to us. Sometimes we don't get invited.
They'll be able to give you much more specifics in the building on that. So, the second goal is around common assessment development and implementing them at regular intervals, three times a year, and the work with that. So, some of the main key steps with that is providing everyone with professional development on how to access and utilize Edwin. Continue to develop and refine, I'd say refine is the major word there for our common assessments. A lot of development is pretty, pretty big, too. It's a continual cycle. And then, we want to make sure that we provide ongoing professional development on how are we using these assessments? The last thing we want to do is to have our staff developing assessments and having students take assessments that aren't meaningful for the instruction that's coming up. If it doesn't provide us good information on, are they learning the standards we need them to learn, and what can we do to engage them next, then we don't want them doing it. So, that's a really key point, that these are meaningful and timely. Whoops, goodness. You got all that ready?
Yeah.
Alright, so, staff has been receiving professional development in Edwin in a couple of different ways. We started with our curriculum writers, because they had to create the assessments in the system. That's where we've done the most work. And then, what we did, instead of making particular dates for professional development, we're rolling it out as needed in the building. So, if I'm ready to administer an assessment, then that group of staff need to learn how to access it, how to administer the assessment, and then how to get to the data afterwards. So, we've been rolling it out as they are getting ready to use it. And that's been going on. We need to continue to provide PD in how to utilize different components of the system. We learn something new every month, and one of the things we learned was stop trying to create our assessments in the system, use external assessments, which means you have a Word document of your assessment. We're just gonna simply upload that into the system and create your answer sheet. It's a much easier situation, and staff were much happier with that. It's just an easier.
Yeah, I have my pocket. What is Edwin?
I'm gonna show you. It's a system, it's a teaching and learning system that has both an assessment component to it, as well as we could house all of those Google Doc units that we have there. Eventually, our goal is to move them into Edwin, so that staff have one platform to go into for everything that has to do with instruction and assessment, from the district level, that is. So, I was going to link you in to ThinkGate. So, this is, this is kind of just their logo. All of our teachers have access to it. We have over 100 assessments in the system. When we say assessment, it's important to realize, we're not saying in addition to what they should already be doing. It's 100% aligned to the curriculum, and it assesses the curriculum that's being taught. So, what we have been saying repetitively is, this should be an assessment in place of, not in addition to. It's aligned to your curriculum, we're giving assessments anyway. We're just gonna collect full-scale data on three of the assessments you would do to begin with.
If I could visualize this, take grade four. They just finished a unit in math. So, can I think that within a relatively short period of time, all grade four teachers will be given the same assessment on that unit within the same period of time?
Within the same period of time. So, we're working to have every unit assessment be common. What we decided to do is start with three. And then, that's based on, you know, some of the research around best practices of bringing data teams together at regular intervals.
You would hope that those should all be done regardless of the building, regardless of the teach?
Correct.
All be done within that same.
If you're teaching the same curriculum, then you're giving the same assessment, correct.
The same period of time, okay.
Yep.
And these would replace, like what we may have called a quiz or a midterm?
Would be a larger, a larger, so at the beginning of the year, it may replace, say, unit five, the unit five assessment. And it may have a couple of questions from units one through four, but, so it would cover that span of the curriculum. The way, you mentioned K to five, the way K to five didn't, and the high school and middle school staff can give you more information on how they're developing them. But we cut it into thirds, because it was manageable, it made sense. It was a good enough time to start taking a litmus test of where are our students? And it gives you two main purposes, is again, the instruction moving forward, what do I need to reteach, or what skills do I want to incorporate in the next unit if I don't have to actually reteach that? But what is something I have to pay attention to with the students moving forward? As well as, did we see any, any pattern across all of the classes that show that we have to take a look and revise our curriculum for those particular units? So, it helps us in two of those components, two buckets.
And they take about, they take the same amount of time that a regular test would take? They're not taking up half a day for one class?
We've been saying it should take the same amount of time that a class period or so. And then, departments are deciding whether to go with that. For the most part, they are. Some are aligning them to what the expectation for assessment moving forward would be. So, it may be taking them a little bit longer than a class period. But we can get more information on that from the, from the buildings, because they've been doing the implementation.
And then, are there any sort of, so the common assessment are also assessments that were taken by students that have IEPs?
Yes.
Or special needs?
Yep. So, if they are being taught the curriculum, then they are, that particular curriculum, then they are being assessed the same way. We provide accommodations the same way you would for, for students in the classroom on a regular basis. As far as specialized programs, what we've told our low-incidence groups is if, if you're teaching a modified curriculum, which is different than just providing accommodations.
Right.
Then, you should assess what you are modifying. And so, a lot of times, your low-incidents do a lot of trial and error. So, they do a lot of trial, and they collect data with some repetitive skills. So, if I need to teach them to be able to start writing their name on the left side of the paper, and then they trial, and they track that, how many times out of 10 instances was the student able to do that? They're tracking that level of data anyway, then we're just gonna let them continue to do that. That makes the most sense for them in the student's instruction. Again, if it doesn't make sense for the students moving forward, then we're not doing it.
Right. Thank you for elaborating on all of that, because I know that there is some confusion out there about assessments and what the common assessment is and what it's doing for our students.
Yeah, it's, it's what we're teaching. We're assessing what we're teaching, and that's the bottom line with that. So, this is what Edwin, this is the platform for Edwin. We are on the assessment tab. The district assessments are all in this first tile. Some people are creating classroom assessments, too, individual quizzes, and they are able to use that. And then, there's a reporting function. I'm not gonna bring you into the reports, because it brings up actual names and such, but I want to point you to this help tab. There are, before they did, this is a new feature, and before this, we had Connor creating a lot of videos, and we were doing some, some QuickTime videos and putting them all into a Google Doc, or a Google folder for people to access.
He's bringing us a Edwin go-to person. Connor was the, not only the middle school go-to person, but for a while, he was the district go-to person and was building us self-help videos.
I want to see some of his videos now.
So, I now.
Don't ask that. Don't ask that.
So, now, now staff can go in, there's a reference center, but this is their newest feature. These are all YouTube videos on all different components. feature, these are all YouTube videos on all different components. So I just clicked the formative assessment, and if I needed to remember how to access results, I just scroll down and go, oh, look at this, standards analysis. And then I can pull up a video, it'll walk me through where to find this report and tells me what the report actually does. So that's all there for our staff to access. So in a nutshell, Edwin is a place where we are building and housing our assessments, we're able to get quick data, I can get proficiency data as soon as I've given the assessment, I can get standard spaced reports and item analysis the next day, it takes about 24 hours for that. And that has been, there's been a large learning curve for all of us and trying to learn the system itself, it's not very intuitive, but once you get to the reports, we start to calm down because that's, those are helpful, those have been found helpful.
Quick question, so now with these reports, with these tests, these assessments, are they kind of like MCAS where they don't necessarily go towards the student's grade, or are they, or do they go towards student's grade?
That's a good question. We are, they are being used for grades, it's completely aligned to the curriculum, and so they are being used as grades.
So this is more like a standardized test, but it's something that you are able to study for and it should be aligned perfectly with your curriculum?
Right.
And also able to give everyone big data and all of that?
Yep, big data, little data, you can drill down, and people are doing performance-based still, where it's not, everything's not turning paper pencil, we can talk a little bit about that.
And this is in-school data, it's not something that you're reporting to the state, that it really is for the teachers, for the staff to, I don't know, Jamie, you're looking...
But we would never give these results.
We would never report individual scores or names, what, there's confusion and there's, I think there's probably confusion.
Because you hear the word standardized or common and you think, is it a state thing?
Right, with the professionals and our parents and possibly with students. And so we're trying to, to the extent possible, clarify and make sure people aren't confused. You've heard the term district determined measure?
Right.
That's something that's basically put upon all school systems by the state, it's something that we have to do to make sure that we're continuing to implement the evaluation system the way the state has asked us to implement that. One element that we've been working on for the last three years is developing common assessments, which is a research best practice. It brings in a collaborative approach, you're starting to, just as you were talking about, see teachers of the same subject working together, they identify what skill sets should students master by a certain point, and then they get data on that. None of that's being reported to the state. What we would use when these come online is teachers can select these common assessments as a district determined measure because we do have to discuss an impact rating, how is their teaching impacting students? And that's a discussion that takes place between the teacher and the evaluator, and then all we would report to the state is very similar to what we report now, which is what was the final result? How did you rate these people? And it's just a statistic, you know, East Long Meadow has 88% of their teachers were proficient, or whatever that number is for the year.
I think it's really important for everybody to realize what is being said here, that the standardized common assessments that we're using are not the same as what the state is demanding us to use now, that these are just terminology, the terminology we're using, there's, it's night and day. Because I understand what you're saying, everybody else watching needs to understand that these are not reporting, this type of test is not being reported to the state, that that's just the way we're doing things here to assess our own students and it stays in-house.
So I was on the phone with some staff members a little after four, who were going over the whole difference between developing common assessments and what is a DDM, and what I, what we had mentioned that during that phone call was, listen, we are never going to take what the state is having us do and retrofit what you're doing to fit that, what we're doing is the opposite. We were going to be creating common assessments anyway because we want this data cycle and this revision cycle with teaching and learning, it's just, it's a best practice. So we're going to take that and we're going to make it fit what the state is looking for. It's, we didn't start it because of DDMs, it just happens that we can use it to meet that requirement. And if, and again, if it's not important for instruction moving forward for our students or can give us good curricular measure, then we'll switch what we're doing and find something that dies.
So Mr., to simplify, so to SMART goal one and two, parent regardless of who the teacher is, let's take the high school, there's maybe 10 sections of a course, no matter who's teaching that course, that section, they're all pretty much receiving the same instruction, curriculum, and assessments.
They have the same curriculum goals and objectives, and the outcomes should be the same, the students should walk away with learning the same knowledge that they did regardless of who the teacher is. We leave a lot of leeway in how that instruction gets across because of teacher's style and preference, but as far as the goals and objectives and the outcomes should be the same.
Now, when they go through the assessments, do they know they're being assessed, is it like a separate thing, or is it just, oh, you're getting this test, but it actually is an assessment and it just, it's like regular work?
That would be a question for the buildings, I could tell you, I've been in a dance class where people have come up and said, I'm taking a common assessment tomorrow, oh, you, I've seen you in the schools, you know, it's funny because they're, they do know what they're doing is an assessment, but you ask a second grader, they know they're taking an assessment too, whether you call it a common assessment or just a unit assessment.
Okay.
So it's, yeah.
We're just, it's just a difference, I think, in the way we're approaching it now. It's the same, it's different in how we're using it, that's all.
All right, I'm just saying, they're not thinking they're getting a quiz or a test, they're just being assessed, even if it is being used for grades ultimately?
We'll let the buildings speak, submit to that. I mean, they know assessment regardless of what type of assessment we're getting, they do know when they're getting an assessment.
Well, it just seems like having it common, it just takes away another variable that is not controlled, at least you're controlling the questions and you can assess the data.
Which, and then I'm going to be quiet, because the last thing I'd like to say about that is we're really strict around the distribution of the assessments. So in, within Edwin, we lock them down. So if you're a curriculum writer, obviously you've seen the assessment, the administrative team, we approve the assessments before they're able to be given and give feedback to revising and tweaking them. Once they're approved and kind of locked down for, to be administered, we don't open those assessments up for everyone until the assessment window. So this morning, I was opening an assessment window for grades K to five because they're in an assessment window coming up. What that does is no one gets access to the assessment ahead of time, which is a big bone of contention for our staff, they don't want those assessments out, nor should they be, because having access to the assessment could kind of skew our results, and we really want to see, we're doing this type of instruction on a regular basis, can our students implement it in a cold call type of way, right? Can they, can they do it without having seen this prior? Can they, can they put their knowledge that they've been learning to a different situation? So, so we're really careful about that too, you won't see a binder with assessments in it, they're really kind of locked down in the, in the system until we're ready to give them.
Good, all right. Learned a lot about them now, clarified a lot for me, thank you.
And actually, a lot of what you were hitting in terms of confusion, where are our students, what do people understand, what's the communication process, it kind of centers in goal three. We want to make sure that we're always looking at what is the climate of our district, our buildings, and are we maintaining a respectful and nurturing learning environment for our students? So that's goal three. Couple of key action steps from the district end is that as we take our surveys, and our surveys over the last few years have become somewhat consistent now, we're doing the student exit surveys, we have participated every other year in the Tellmas survey, we did a parent survey last year that gave us really good results and a high participation rate, and we also, after each professional development, we do a quick evaluation, usually through, I think high school uses Survey Monkey, other buildings may use other ways of getting that information, but we're trying to get immediate feedback. That allowed us across the district in each building to look at a couple of different key survey findings as they shared this with staff and school council, and then develop an action plan, which also helps us put together possible parent workshops as we look to go through any given school year. So just to give you an idea of where we stand on that, the buildings this fall reviewed, actually the leadership team in the summer reviewed all the survey information that we've received, then the buildings take back that information and share it with their staff, in some cases, they may use their principal advisory committee to help them present that, but also to go through the different findings and then set an action plan. So that happened, it was completed, the buildings now have action plans on which they're working. And throughout the school year, various buildings have been presenting parents' nights, most recently, we just had a parent night at Maple Shade that was on assessments and more importantly, probably the work we were doing at Maple Shade to align to the common core state standards.
Mr., so I don't, we have not seen the results of the survey, quite as a school committee?
We saw it last, last spring, at the end of the year, actually June, so early summer.
Okay, so I'm not, I'm not sure I'm aware of the, the one or two key survey findings that these buildings were doing.
That's, each building comes up with that from the results of the surveys. So if you remember, in June, we did our end of the year report, we presented survey findings from the various surveys, not only the parent, but the Tellmas, and the buildings also started to talk a little bit about where they were going with that. And then we did further work this summer to break that down, and then the buildings in the fall start to break it down with their staff.
Okay.
So from a district standpoint, probably our biggest one is the one I chose to highlight, but to give you a one that we did in the fall, we partnered with Willie Ross and did a, for a smaller audience, we set up a parents' day, actually, and Mrs. Marjorie Boucher was there to help us with that, for parents of deaf students, start to break down what supports are out there, where they can go for help. We present, we spent the better part of a Saturday putting that on for really any parents that were in the area, and I think we actually had some parents from Eastern Mass that attended. But more specifically to this week, we actually have the start of what we hope to be a series of events, but the first one is happening this Wednesday night, and we were talking about it earlier, it's our youth safety night, and it's dealing with the opioid crisis that's not only hitting Massachusetts, but certainly is hitting Massachusetts, it's probably hitting, it's a national epidemic, and not only did the governor step in in Massachusetts asking towns to be aware of this and start to take action, but local communities has begun, and we're one of those local communities, where East Long Meadow Public Schools will be joined by the East Long Meadow Police Department, Springfield Department of Public Health, we've established a partnership with them around this issue, and we want to provide information, and we really like it to be sort of a catalyst event, if you will, to get an idea, one, where is our community in terms of their knowledge of this crisis, and what further information would they need so we can set up other events to start to help in East Long Meadow and surrounding communities? And then what other experts or services are out there? And some of that will be on display Wednesday night. If you connect just quickly to show you, there is a YouTube video that Mr. Mackey sent.
Hello, welcome to another edition of On the Town, I'm Don Mackey. Special edition today, I have members of the town's opioid education awareness committee here to talk about a very important and troubling development, as you may have heard in the news, recently, of the widespread problem of opioids, heroin addiction, and overdose in statewide. Last fall, former Governor Patrick declared a public health emergency to address the growing problem of addiction in communities across the Commonwealth.
So we won't continue with the video, it's actually a 50-minute video, but if you go to the Alcat website, you can see that video, it not only gives you great insight into what we hope to have happen on Wednesday, it takes it even a step further, the student in the middle there presents his story, and it's quite compelling, incredible courage by that young man. So it's worth checking out on the YouTube channel, and then certainly we want to invite people to come on Wednesday night, that's going on from 6:00 to 8:30 p.m. Taking us into District Goal Four, which is predominantly around making sure that our resources are aligned effectively to meet our goals and objectives. When we say resources, the largest of which is our budget, making sure that we're looking at our budget and aligning it in such a way that we're providing the materials needed for the instruction that's going on in our classrooms. So key steps there is we always take a look at as we begin the budget process, which seems like it really never ends, but the traditional beginning is somewhere around October with capital planning, and then we move in November into looking at how do we spend our budget last year, what have trends been, what's the return on investment? Some of the things you've heard this evening are things we look at, such as Atlas made sense for the last two years for us to develop these curriculum maps and have a place to house them, have a chance for people to develop in a collaborative way, not only revise them, but have a chance to align them with the standards and work through the scope and sequence as Mrs. Nier was talking about earlier. Now, as we look at that, it's not an expense we want to continue to take on, especially since we can't provide licensure for all of our staff. So at the moment, those units now are in Google Docs, which allows all of our staff access, and you saw the result tonight, what those units look like. Eventually, we hope to be fully in Edwin, and each of these is somewhat of a cost savings measure, so we'll no longer pay the licensure for Atlas, we'll move towards Edwin, which is at the moment, best expensive. Then certainly we develop a budget timeline with all of you, we're actually in that timeline at the moment, tomorrow night, we get to sit with the appropriations committee and see how that timeline might change and what different questions they may have. And we continue, especially in this process, to use the Google platform to help collaborate, not only as a leadership team, but all of you benefited from the Google platform because that request form, which was utilized, then populated a spreadsheet, which you then could take a look at and see, okay, what's being requested from the different departments in different buildings, why is it being requested, and what's some of the process behind it? And that was the spreadsheet, if you remember, that was in your school committee packet back in December. To give you an idea of where we, can you go back one, thank you, where we are in this process, we were able to analyze how we were, what trends we saw in our budget expenditures, we took a look at how we want to move forward in terms of spending the budget that we have and making sure that it's getting the proper return on investment in supporting our students. That happened in the fall, started, ended summer in December, and then the Google platform is something that we continue to utilize, not only in the budget process, but across the district, and that's actually the example that is next up. Just to give you a snapshot, Google now provides the town an update as to how we're utilizing, and they actually call it Google for Education, but I believe it's townwide, and so actually it's a cost savings for the town. If we had not gotten involved, I think it would have been a little bit more expensive for the town to move into a Google platform. So through December, starting this school year, 7,701 Google documents, collaborative documents have been developed, Google Sheets, which would be Google's product, similar, it's a spreadsheet, similar to Excel, 1,969 documents, and then Google Forms, specifically the one we were just talking about was the budget form, and so that's the link, but our staff's now utilizing this as well, not as much, but as we continue to learn, 245 forms have been developed, and so it basically, to give you one example, other than the budget form, was our Grin spoon nominations, was this year online.
Okay, so this is on, this is, this is a whole synopsis, this isn't just on the budget I was...
No, no. Just to give you an idea.
Okay, you kind of jumped on it, so this is a kind of a comprehensive... So this is a kind of a comprehensive look now.
Right.
We're not in a budget anymore.
Oh, no, we're still with budget, because this is more efficient, because one of the results of this.
That's townwide as well.
Right.
Yes. The majority of the users are in the schools.
Does it count the students for documents?
If the students have accounts, it would count them as well. Yeah. So from a budget standpoint, Mr. Ficero, that's a good segue. It saves time and it saves down the road, although I think we're still printing quite a lot of paper, it's eventually going to save in paper. And so the budget form is not something that we have to now send out in paper, collect all of that, and that's the link there, you just click on that link. So that was the segue. You took me there, thank you.
I need permission to do that.
Any permission?
Yeah, that happens to me sometimes, too.
So that ruins my example, but anyway, the budget form you've seen populates it. The one I was going to mention before we segued to the budget form was the Grin spoon nominations were also captured in this way. And so that was, that was pretty neat. Out went the ballot boxes that used to populate, I think, the offices, and everybody did it online. And so that was, that was quite a good process. So key measurements as we continue through, and we'll be looking to see where we are at the end of the year, is, you know, have we been able to provide common assessments and implement them in all grade levels, in all content areas, grades six through 12? In the elementary grades right now, you're looking predominantly at math and ELA. But six through 12, we're working in all content areas, all grade levels. Use of Edwin teaching and learning by staff members, whose common assessments can be housed in the system. That was a key component that we briefly touched on. You can't house all common assessments in Edwin. There are some that will be, that are quite unique, and those will have to be housed elsewhere and kept, the results kept elsewhere. Establish baseline achievement level for all of our students on these common assessments. That's what we're starting to do now. Make sure that our budget is not only developed, but it's supporting the needs that we've identified as a district. And in terms of state assessment, we want to make sure that the benchmarks that they've provided for us, that we're hitting those as a district. Question?
When you presented, you mentioned about the climate survey, show increase, that's the, we'll see later on. I know it's pretty tough to do that now, okay.
Now, we do a quick changeover, which looks like we've already done. So the high school's going to step in, and they already have it up on screen.
Thank you. We started off by kind of going back to a reminder of our CPI school targets. And one of the things I think we're very proud of at the high school, and need to celebrate, I think as a district, is the success that we've had with ELA. As you remember, we've hit our target set forth by the state in ELA, not only all students, but also in our high needs category as well. So that's a definite win for our district. In the area of math, there is still some room to grow. We have not yet met the targets, but it certainly works towards closing the gap there. This data is going to kind of guide you to our first SMART goal, SMART goal one. And we thought it was really important to stay focused on our state assessments, not for the sake of, for, you know, staying above these markets, but, you know, good practices of making sure that our teachers and students are doing well with our standards is very important to us. So in terms of progress, one of the things that we continue to work very hard at at the high school is our data, the data that we collect, the assessments that we use. As you recall, the high school went with utilizing open response as our common assessment, if you will. And I think the results of that, we've done really well with ELA, so I think that that's a definite plus. We've established data meetings at the high school, and one of the things that I wanted to show you is we've also developed a protocol for how teachers get together and talk about the data. So you have a sample of what a data analysis protocol sheet might look like for open response. And so our teachers get together within their content area, they talk about what, how the students perform in various elements of writing, so focus through organizations, you can see that on the left there. And then we kind of guide them through the process of actually talking about the assessment itself, because sometimes we learn after students take an assessment that there were discrepancies, not necessarily the student's fault. Maybe it's the way that we worded a question. Maybe there was some kind of misconception that we need to review again. So we incorporate that into our protocol as well. And then we also look to what, how are we going to fix this? We've identified some areas of problem. What are our next steps? What are our action steps? So this is just an example of what, how we kind of help our teachers walk through the data analysis process. Next year, we're going to be utilizing standards-based assessments, so this analysis will look completely different.
So this is, this sheet is for a department, not, not, not as individual student, right?
Correct, yeah. Content area or department. So for example, all the English nine teachers get together and they talk about, hey, what do we see across the board? How did our kids do? And, you know, if there were some weaknesses, what collectively can we do about it? What are some things that we need to take a look at from an instructional standpoint that will help our students improve?
Those dates, are those the dates when the assessment was given or when the data team met?
Those are the dates when, let's see here.
They said this.
When the data team met, yeah.
Okay.
Right, so, just want to go back to the previous slide. So that's the data assessment protocol sheet and the department analysis of scores. One of the things that we are doing right now, secondary level, is we are hosting curriculum meetings with, for example, in math, the Berchlin folks are meeting with the high school folks to talk about, you know, where we are with the scope and sequence, what we're seeing with the assessments and so forth. And we're also doing that with ELA. And a perfect example of why this is so beneficial is, and Tim can talk to about this as well, our summer reading and our reading selections that we use at the middle school versus the high school level. We were seeing that there were some overlap. So there were some things that was covered at the middle school level that we were also doing at the high school. So we were having conversations now to say, okay, is that really appropriate? Do we need to change things? We need to make things more aligned. So that's been happening as well. And then as Valerie alluded to, we're continuing to work on our standards-based common assessments so that they can be initiated for next year.
So Dr. Flynn, what percentage would you say, I know, I'm just asking about the percentage of common assessments for the whole high school, whole high school course of office, what percentage do you say are already in place?
Well, it's great that you ask that, because we actually created a Google Doc for our teachers right before the break. And we asked them to give us a heads up of where you're at. So are you 50% done? You're 100% done? And I think, and one of the questions, most importantly, we ask our staff, do you think it's reasonable to have it done by the end of the year? Because Frank Arje and I have to prove them and approve them. So most of the teachers, department chairs that we've talked to said they're in great shape to be done by the end of the school year.
And you mentioned this earlier, and I just want to clarify it, that you said that you're mostly using open response writing prompts for your common assessments?
For this year only.
Oh, for this year?
That was an initiative in response to improving, so writing across the curriculum, which I think worked out really well. But now, we're moving toward individual content standards. So for example, next year, biology, is one example, they will be going, they will be developing their assessments based on the standards that they cover at various points of the year.
Okay, so there'll be a variety of questions. It's not just going to be open response.
Correct, absolutely. And one of the things I also want to point out with the assessments is that the high school, it's going to look very different in every content area. So for example, and we've talked, I'm going to talk a little bit about this later on, but in music, they're doing a performance-based assessment. In art, they're doing a performance-based assessment where they're actually, the students actually have to work on a project or do something hands-on.
I like colorati, it's a performance.
Yeah. So those teachers have developed a common rubric to set forth the expectations for the assessment. In other areas, they might be doing a couple multiple choice questions and maybe an open response question. So they look different, depending on the department, but the important thing is, is that the members of that content area are all giving the same assessments.
I most, on multi-sectional courses, isn't the final exam a common assessment?
Well, here's, there's been an evolving way of looking at that. When we first started the process, our teachers seemed pretty gung-ho on making the midterm and their final their common assessment. They are still going to have common midterms and finals. However, some of the feedback that we're hearing from our teachers is that, you know, a final exam is very comprehensive, there are many questions. And really, the purpose of these, of the common assessment, the data process part, is to just pick out how they're doing on those power standards, like those most important standards that they need to know before they finish an Algebra I class. And so what we're seeing is, some of our departments, in addition to having a common midterm and a common assessment, are doing the common assessments as like a, maybe a 10-question quiz, if you will, prior to getting to the midterm or prior to getting to the final exam. So that, it guides instruction. So they know going into finals, okay, this is a misconception that our kids have, let's review it, let's reteach it, that kind of thing.
So there's time for reteaching?
There is. And that's really, that's, that's the best part of this process, is that, you know, in the past, we kind of like eyeballed it, I think they're getting it. Well, now we know what they're getting, and it gives us the opportunity to reflect and say, what are we going to do about it?
Right. Or you can see in one class, some things, you know, didn't get through, whereas in another class it did. It's like, okay, the two teachers may have to reteach something, a different, I don't know the word to use.
Yeah, they share, they collaborate.
Well, you get a snapshot of what's going on, and then you collaborate, and then go from there.
So I just want to make sure I'm understanding this, too, that each common assessment that you're coming up with goes through this data analysis protocol?
Correct.
How long does that take the department to go through that protocol?
It might take them to department meetings. So like I said, this year was really a kind of a guinea pig on how this is all going to play out. And with that particular sheet that I showed, our feedback from our staff was like, we need more time. So as we move into next year, we might build a day-to-day around two department meetings, or a staff meeting and a department meeting, to make sure that teachers get the time that they need.
Right. Because you almost want like a quick turnaround.
Yes, yes, which is hard, because the way our meetings are scheduled, particularly, we don't have common planning time like they do at the middle school. So the high school's very challenging.
That's what, this was, I was very confused by all this, and that's why I wanted to ask you these questions, because I'm looking at this, trying to understand how it fit into the common assessment. So thanks for clarifying.
Yeah. So, why is it moving?
Any other questions?
Sorry, we're having, okay, so moving forward. So SMART Goal Two, and again, all of our goals are aligned to the district initiatives that are going on, the district goals. We're still staying consistent with developing a solid instructional block with our staff. We are really, really focused at the high school on making sure that our teachers are writing strong objectives, that when we go into classrooms, that we see evidence of the objective being, you know, engaged with the students. So that is, that continues with us. If you go into any high school classroom, you'll see the big bullseye, you'll see the instructional block. And I think the feedback from most of our staff is it does help to keep them in line, but it also, and Jack, I don't know, if you could speak to the student perspective of how, you know, knowing that, you know, what I need to do, know, be able to do before the class, and how the plan is going to happen, I think is a benefit to students as well.
Well, yeah, exactly. I mean, for example, I, I was in a anatomy class today, we were going through a PowerPoint, and then, you know, Ms. Holt does a great job, she goes through the whole thing every day, just like all the teachers do. And then she always gives us like a question as like a wrap-up, as saying, okay, this is what you should be getting out of your main objective. And it does help, because then you go into, you know, your homework, or you're going to study for the quiz tomorrow, you know, you have a basis of what you should know. If I can explain this, I can make a story out of this, you know, then I should be well prepared. I think that it makes class run by a lot more smoothly, too, knowing that you go from step, you know, step by step, this is where, you know, we start off with, you know, and activate it, and then we move to the objective, and the mini lesson, you know, all that stuff, I think it does definitely make it run much more smoothly.
Awesome. One of the things that we did internally at the high school recently is we did a math learning walk. The administrators and department chair, math department chair, and some Algebra I teachers, we went through some of our departments, just to kind of get an idea of the instructional practices that are going on. And I provided you a sample of what that looked like. It's, I think it's like slide number, I don't know if you see, but it says math learning walk, ELA. So this is the actual, this is the email that I sent to my staff. And basically, what we were trying to do is trying to highlight the things that we're doing really, really well, to encourage people to continue those best practices. But then we also want our teachers to think about some things that we could do better. And so the great thing about this is that instead of it coming from the administrators all the time, now we're asking our staff to give their, their thoughts on it. So it takes a little bit of the edge off when it comes from their own colleagues, but it also comes in the best light. We're just trying to grow and make things better. And just to highlight, you know, one of the things that we really started to tackle in the math department is how do we know that the kids are getting it before we move on to the new material? Which is so important in math, because it's so foundational, the skill piece. If the kid misses a step, it could, you know, affect how they relate to the next lesson. So we're talking a lot about that within the department, which I think is a good thing. But again, that's coming from them, which is really helpful.
Just want to ask one question. I may have missed a look at your November presentation. So did I hear that the reward included the department chair and staff?
Yes.
So we have articulated that, okay.
Yeah, and we're going to, what we've talked about doing is maybe doing that next one with the English language or history department. We might even do mixed departments. But I think the power of this is that our teachers say all the time, they like to see what other teachers are doing. So that's really powerful. But it also lets them be reflective. It's coming from them rather than, you know, an administrative viewpoint. One of the things that we utilize this year at the high school is, in terms of collaboration time and staff meetings, PLCs, professional learning communities. And we're super happy with how that's going. I put an example here for you. Basically, with teachers, we're asked to, you know, pick a topic in education that you feel is important in your content area, that you maybe always wanted to, you know, have the time to research but haven't. And now that you do, we, what we're asking them to, as you can see here, they have to do a little bit of research, they have to collect a little data. So for example, the, these three examples here, our science department, we have three teachers working on inquiry-based learning. We have our business department working on incorporating technology. And then our music department, which you can see transferred to the middle school, are working on performance-based assessments in music. So they do research, they have to do data, they, then the other piece is, they have to identify important educational findings. What was so, you know, profound about what we did? And what are some steps that we might want to consider next? And then this whole process is going to be shared out with our full staff. So it's a lot of collaboration, and I think it gives our teacher a little bit of self-empowerment to really spend some time doing things that they think matter most in the classroom.
When, when do they do this?
Collaboration days and any like, we really moved away from staff meetings being us just talking to them. So we utilize Google Docs for the memo pieces, and then we release them to go work on the professional learning communities.
And I just have some questions to clarify a couple of terms, maybe, because I've seen them thrown around, and I may not know exactly what they mean. So I hear things like instructional block, core instruction, and core instructional block, and I'm confused. So can you just help clarify some of those terms for me?
So the instructional block is really just a format of a good lesson, right? So best practices are, whenever you're communicating with students, you want to tell them the objective, what they need to know and be able to do. The mini lesson is the teacher-directed piece, the student engagement piece is the students actually applying what they just learned in the mini lesson and coming forth with that. So these are best practices in a lesson. That's what the instructional block is. Core instruction is the main, like ELA, math, science, social study, those are our core content areas, and how we develop those. That's the core instruction piece. So, thank you. And it was a lot of different, yeah, they all overlap.
And we had defined as a district, three years ago now, the instructional block district. So we use the same terminology across the district, which has helped for collaboration between buildings. It helps when I'm entering a building or Mrs. Sineer's entering a building, we can use the same terminology, no matter where we are.
And then while I have this technology PD form that you have up here right now, so what I thought of the technology professional development is really for the teachers and the administrators of how to utilize these new programs that you're bringing into the school, correct?
For the purpose of moving instruction.
Right, okay. It's not really into like how they're bringing it into the classroom for the students yet?
Yes, it is. So it's twofold. So for example, this is our, this was a PD that we did earlier this year. So yes, we're introducing them to Google Docs, Google Forms, Blogger, but in the con- context of how would you apply this in a classroom? So for example, when we did Google Blogger, one of the assignments that they had was to create a blog that they would use with their students. So we're getting the instructional piece, but also coming with a product that they can use in the classroom. And the great thing about this is it was completely facilitated by our staff. We do, I mean, I did present one thing as well, but the teachers really loved the practical application of it, the hands-on application of it, and that it was coming from their colleagues. It was really, really powerful and we're going to keep doing this.
And I like it because it's showing that the technology isn't just about using a Word document.
It's all, it's all based on instruction. One of the things that we, we try to do too is we have, the teachers can sign up for different sessions. So you can see here, they had multiple choices of things that they could do and we recycle them. So if you didn't get to see, you know, Google Docs this time around, the next PD day, you can sign up for that as well. It's pretty cool.
Yeah, that sounds really neat.
All right, and let's see, SMART goal number three.
Before you go there, just, what far, where was your conference over, July 2015? You said in November, that standards-based curriculum will be developed and implemented. How was our conference with that?
You mean the curriculum guides?
Yeah, yeah, standard-based curriculum, which is, is true.
Yeah, that's what we were talking about earlier. So we had a Google Doc created with all our department chairs to say, hey, where are, so curriculum guides and the assessments. The curriculum guides, I think, are going to take a little bit longer.
You're on July 25th?
I do.
Okay.
Yeah. And I don't think they'll be ready in every content area. But the important thing right now for us was the assessment piece. All right, and last but not least, fostering a safe, positive, respectful environment. Again, relating this to our district goals. One of the things that we really initiated this year was the principal advisory committee at the high school, which we meet once a month and the teachers generate the agenda primarily. And we take a collaborative approach to various school issues. So you can see here, we've been talking a lot about scheduling. It's a big topic at the high school right now. So we've been, we've been doing some work with that. The principal advisory committee actually helped us develop the PD plan that we have in place, right? You know, we talked about policies today. We presented a policy to the principal's advisory committee that you will see, hopefully a proposal very soon. And then one of the things that we're working on is doing a yearly school climate survey with our staff internally. And so they're helping us develop that survey as well. So that's worked out really well. The other thing that we are working on right now is creating an advisor-advisee program at the high school as a result of the recommendations of Niasq. That's, that's, that's being developed right now. We are also in April bringing in a guest speaker, Chris Heron. I don't know if you are familiar with who he is. Yeah, he's going to be coming in to speak, to doing a, you know, anti-drug kind of message with our students.
Night program for parents with him?
I don't think at this time we are. We're just doing an internal one with the students at this point. And then one of the things that, you know, one of the things that I really love is when it's student-developed, student-facilitated. I think that's so powerful presentation for our kids. And, you know, we've had some issues this year at the high school around bullying and honoring diversity. And we had some really difficult conversations with kids about how they represent themselves, not only within the high school, within the community. And it really helped us kind of develop in the spring, what we're doing is our students are creating a video in conjunction with the multicultural club and the Gay-Straight Alliance. And the topic is related to our mission statement, honoring diversity. And so they're going to create a video on what that means. And then they're going to put, build in discussion questions to be discussed in smaller groups and homeroom. And the idea is, is that, you know, these are real topics that, that we face every day and let's talk about it and let's talk about what's right about it, what's wrong about it. And I think that's going to kind of fall into our advisor-advisee program once we get it going. But that's something that will work as well. That's it?
Any questions for Dr. Flanagan?
You are using the staff survey, the Yacht Survey, was being utilized?
Our school climate survey is, so, you know, we have the Telmas. It happens every other year. We thought it was important to be a little bit proactive and solution-based. Instead of waiting two years to get the data and then trying to figure out what to do, we thought it might be best that every year, we talk about things that are going well and things that we need to improve on with our principal advisory. So that it's not, you know, I call it the autopsy. You get the results and then what do you do with it? So now it's just our attempt to be more proactive and it's completely internal. It's not something we, we share out. It's with our own staff, so.
All right, Birchland, still with us?
We are.
Ready? All right. So like Dr. Flanagan, I started with just our CPI goals for the year, just as a refresher. Similar to the high school, we met our goal in science last year, which was very exciting for us and we're hoping to continue that. But we've all seen these numbers and that's what we're aiming to do this year. Our first SMART goal, number one, for the second year in a row, we focused on open response questions and raising our open response scores. Hopefully, again, in some places, we met it and some we were just short, but by 5%. So in ELA, that would go from 63 to 68. Math, 63 to 68. And science, from 52 to 57. So in order to attack this goal, we are delivering the standards-based common assessments three times this year in all core classes. So our common assessments have, have at the minimum multiple choice questions and an open response on, on every one. So most of our staff just implemented common assessment two. Some of them are implementing it in the next week or two.
Dr. Allen, back to Ms. Mayo's question I had before. When you say core, what class are you meaning by core class?
Math, English, Science, Social Studies. So while we're on that, I'll, so our other classes, our unified arts classes and our Spanish classes, they are all piloting their, so like we have a lot of 10-week classes. So in the 10-week classes, they're going to give a common assessment in the middle and at the end. And they're in the process right now of building the end one. And they'll be giving that into their fourth marking period classes. So in math, English, science, and social, we will give the standards-based full-out assessments in all three this year. And then in our unified arts and our Spanish. Spanish, our departments are actually writing them together and fitting them into both curriculum. And like I said, so we're, we'll be up and running with all of them. But we've been focused for two years now on the math, English, science, and social. So like I said, multiple choice and an open response. And then a lot of teachers now, because of PARC, have started to add short answers, which is more work for them, but allows you to give more rigor on the test for the students. So even common assessment one, before we had really seen what PARC was, it was pretty standard that, because they, all the assessments go through us, so we approve them all, you know, and in some cases, there's two or three meetings with the teachers to sort of say, let's talk about this question, let's talk about that one, let's talk about overall, which is a great, very, very healthy process for the teachers too. You know, I think they like having that time to reflect and get feedback. So, but we've seen, especially since PARC started putting out its performance-based assessment examples and its end year, when you see the rigor on those assessments, we've realized we can't emulate that rigor solely through multiple choice. So we have a lot that's added, short answers as well. All of these assessments in math, English, science, and social studies this year are being administered using Edwin. So students are using bubble sheets. And in the case of short answer ones, if you can picture it, like if a, if a teacher's using a few short answer questions, they still, the kid still gets a number 12. And there's a bubble sheet and it says like 0, 1, 2, 3. But the kid doesn't fill anything in on number 12. When the teacher corrects it, the teacher fills in whether they got a 0, 1, 2, or 3. So the kid puts in the multiple choice on the bubble sheet and then the teacher gets their open response and their short answers, bubbles in the rest of it, hands it back to Connor. And then that, it's one thing that we haven't said much about Edwin, but the, its turnaround with data is unbelievable. So a lot of what you were talking about, Ms. Fertler, about how long does this take? Well, Edwin takes out 80% of it because it just spits out the reports at you. So you don't need to search for where they're struggling. It just tells you five minutes after he scans them, it tells you. So the process, that the length or the heart of the process for the teacher is really seeing all that information and then deciding what to do about it. They don't have to mine the data as much as they have to decide what to do about it. So that's happening in all of our core classes. And then we have a data cycle that takes place afterwards. I sort of put three words here, analysis, collaboration, reteaching. Last year, we had a data protocol similar to the one Dr. Flanagan chose, is using at the high school. This year, we purposely told our teachers, we're not bringing a protocol to the table because this is the first time that all the data is in Edwin. And so we told them, we want to just go through this cycle and we'll, we'll let, a protocol will emerge from how to best work with Edwin. We didn't know which reports would be good. I mean, there's 20 reports. So the first time through, we were just kind of figuring out which reports they liked. And that, you know, 95% of teachers like one called the distractor analysis best. It's a great report. So we're kind of spending common assessment one and common assessment two doing the process, but not with a formalized protocol. And then the goal would be by common assessment three this year, to pilot a formalized protocol based on feedback. So we're ready for next year.
So are your students still getting STAR exams?
Yeah, yeah, that's the next.
In addition to these common assessments?
Yep. And again, but these common assessments take the place of regular in-class exams. So it, it, it really is, should not be extra. And teachers, even if teachers have made it extra, which most haven't, it, there's been clarity along the way that like this can replace something else and, and so they know that.
Is everybody buying into that it can replace something else?
Yeah, yeah, they are. I mean, it's not that there's not stress, you know.
Well, that's what I've dealt with.
Yeah, it's not that there's not stress because even PARC, I mean, we have nine PARC testing days at our school. So there's, you can't eliminate stress around amount of assessment. But they definitely are buying in that like this should, if we think this through the way we have time do and we've, and we've been like trained on, it should replace something. And it is. I would argue in over 90% of places, it is. So, so yeah, for sure.
Because I realize that it's the first year you're using it, you're only through your second assessment, as you said, but I'm concerned about the buy-in because it is something brand new.
Yeah. No, I mean, I, I can't speak to every school, but at Birchland, at Birchland, the buy-in has been, has been, has been very positive.
We've been lucky because we, we started this last year. We started the process last year. So by the time the, this school year ended last year, we had piloted our third assessment. So the teachers had the summer to really reflect over it. And so they're really thoroughly engaged in the process. And there's a lot, a lot of hard work going into the creation of these assessments and a lot of pride among the teachers.
Well, because aren't the teachers involved in creating?
Oh, it's 100%. 100% of the teachers.
So it's not like you're buying a program like the STAR? They don't have any control over the questions that are being asked. They just click and say, okay.
Well, no, I realize that they were developed.
And I had a third meeting today on one and I approved it. And, and the, and the teacher right away said, where's this? Where's this on the overall scale, you know, of rigor? And I was like, I answered, but I was like.
Yeah.
So, and yes, I mean, going back to what Connor said, so we, we're on a three-year cycle to get this done. In year one, which was last year, our core teachers had to pilot common assessment three. And that led to them being way more prepared to do common assessment one and two this year. And they're all going to change three, by the way. That's the other thing we have found. They are going to tweak these all the time for the right reasons because it's, they're going to continually improve them. And then this year, year two, our specials teachers are piloting common assessment three and next year, we'll have all of them up and running.
So common assessments, confidence is high that the whole building will be doing that?
The whole building is doing it now. Math, English, Science, and Social. Yeah, it's all, it's done. It's being done.
So by the end of the year, 100% of the core teachers will have created three assessments.
Yeah.
And then common assessment is used more for each individual student to develop them going forward versus comparing one year to a prior year. Because you said they're going to tweak the assessment, so it's not like one year would necessarily be relevant to the prior year?
Yeah, it's, the answer's yes. I mean, when they tweak it, it'll have to be reapproved and, and I, the tweaking is almost always going to be to add rigor and to add critical thinking components. But yeah, I mean, it's, these, these at their pure center are formative. They are for us to know what to do next for each of those kids. And, and so the answer's yes.
At some point, do you think that these type of assessments can eliminate STAR? Or will they STAR all sorts of places?
So I'll show you, my next two slides are STAR slides because I wanted to show you data also on how we're getting towards these, how we're doing. I think that they can, I, I think that they can, but I also like having STAR for our tiered classes. Because the one thing we've done at Birchland, I've said, I probably said it too often, but we've increased the amount of tiered classes by 100%. We have over 115 kids in tiered reading and over 115 kids in tiered math. And that's a huge push. And, and you'll see that in five out of six of them, the data is fantastic. So, so just finishing off some of the other things you said, Ms. Marsh and Boucher, you asked, do students know they have a test? Absolutely. It's a test. And we've almost had to say to teachers like, it's not, it's not like the end-all-be-all test, you know, and, but yes, they know they have a test. We approved the test for rigor, which was a system built by the district and it has made the principal's job so much easier and it just gets you involved on the ground level, which is great. Another major thing that has changed for us, I think that, I think you're, are they getting that sample? I think they're getting a sample of one possibly.
I have it.
Yeah. But once PARC came out with their examples, a lot of our common assessment twos look, they are, they're, they've tailored to look like PARC. And I did not, we did not tell them to do that. They just did it, which is phenomenal. And our coaches are a huge help in just sort of seeing that from every angle.
Dr. Allen has a sample.
I have it with me if you want to. We're waiting for, as requested.
So I brought a sixth grade ELA one, common assessment two.
We're going to have to do it, are we?
Well, you don't want to do it. You don't want to do it.
Mr. Martin will scan it. We'll split up those reports.
And then another thing here is we, we have the school-wide analytical rubric, which this was our big push last year, which we, following the lead of the district and the high school, we broke down writing to look at, the high school looks at five components with our young adolescents, we look at three. So that is still up and running. But PARC now doesn't just do open response questions. They do narrative writing, they do informative writing, and they do persuasive writing. So another thing that's started to happen at our school is after building these rubrics and them being a great start for us, a lot of our teachers have come to me and said, can I assess this open response using the PARC rubric? Which is, it looks like ours. It's an analytical rubric broken down into components with multiple factors within each, multiple indicators within each. So that's, I, I say, yeah, yes. I just care that we're looking at it in multiple ways that can drive improvement. So that sort of finishes that slide. So what I have here is STAR data. This is in reading, so I kind of, I'm going to stand up if that's all right. I have to work better when I can get near. So there's four levels in STAR. There's at or above the benchmark, there's on watch, like getting close, there's intervention and there's like urgent, urgent problem. So this is, this is all of our kids and their reading, okay? So if you look at eighth grade, from fall to winter, like we went down 2% in at or above benchmark, but we went up 8% in the level right below it. So, you know, if we're trying to get into those two levels, that's kind of a plus six net there. Seventh grade.
But we have a question.
Yeah. I got a question to Ms. Mayo. If I add up the winter, 69 plus 200 would be 90%. Does that mean that 10% is intervention or urgent?
Yeah. Yeah. Yep, yep. And so, seventh grade, same, well, similar thing. Seventh grade, at or above benchmark stayed even, on watch went up 3%. And then, in sixth grade, we saw a negative one and a negative three, so very slight dips there. So, there's a lot of ways to look at this. I would argue that a lot of the STAR data is more tailored to the kids taking the tiered classes because it's very, now, you'd say it better than me, but it's just tailored to that scaffolded instruction that they get in tiered classes. So, I, you know, this is, this is not bad. This is good. Frankly, it's pretty good in some spots. But, this is where I look at the STAR myself. Like, I would never even really do that for myself, but I would do this. So, then, if you look at our tiered, so, these are the 100 or so kids in our tiered classes. At or above plus on watch, in the fall, was 45, went to 72. So, we saw 27% increase in the categories where we want to see them get into. Seventh grade, a 13% increase, sixth grade, an 18% drop. So, you can imagine where Mr. Martin and I are doing our work right now. But, over, two out of three with massive jumps. And with eighth grade, which is so urgent to have them ready for the next jump, that's a huge, that's a huge gain for us.
Do you think that, like, for instance, just with the sixth grade, do you think it was a way, if we've changed, and I'm not thinking on the elementary schools, but a way fifth grade was changing to change something and then they come into sixth grade and it's changing how they've learned that?
I mean, we, I don't know, but we own that.
Yeah.
We own that, we own that red. So, I, with sixth grade, I would, I agree with you that it takes a while to just get transition and get going. But, but we still, we still got to get that back on the right track. And then, for math, obviously, this is, here's my proudest moment.
Math scores are more impressive than your English.
Well, now, the English, the English, you know, might have a higher baseline in some places. But, yeah, I mean, we are heavily focused on math, for sure. And so, you can see, like, I made this one green, eighth grade on watch, even though it says negative four, because it appears that they jumped up. So, there's 4% less there because there's 6% more in at or above. So, I, you know, this isn't scientific how I green and yellow, that was me. Even here in seventh, where you see some yellows, minus one, plus two, so overall, and then sixth grade there. But, again, here is where I put my attention. These are, we have an incredible tiered math program. I would, I would almost argue to any middle school in the state, you want to see how tiered math should run, see what my teachers have done at Burchland in overnight, overnight. And you can already see the results. And this, by the way, is just at or above. Now, this is STAR. We all remember Eric Bauer last year saying, what's the correlation between STAR and MCAS? It's not always great. And who knows what the correlation is with Park? But, STAR is a valid assessment, so it should be, you know, I'm excited. So, you see plus, and again, just at or above. So, and this is our tiered kid. These are our at-risk math kids.
Do you want to just take a moment and let people know how students get into the tiered?
Yeah, it's all based on their MCAS and then their STAR scores from last year. And then, we reassess after every marking period. We have two different ways it happens. We have five-day-a-week tiered classes that we kind of shuffle those kids in and out every marking period. And then, we have three-day-a-week classes that are all year. So, this, this didn't exist. So, this was, this is the biggest cultural change at Burchland this year. And like, I had kids in the first two weeks that were like, you're telling me I'm getting three extra maths all year and I can't work my way out of it? And I said, no, you can't. But, I mean, you know, and now, it's just part of what is, you know, part of what is. Today, Mr. Martin and I gave out, you know, we give free SNAP coupons to the kids that show the most growth. So, during lunch, we called up 60 kids today and celebrated them and gave them SNAP coupons for, for being the ones that led to this. So, you can see in tiered math that the data, it looks good. We'll see how it looks on Park, but it looks good here.
I hope your common assessments will help with that.
Yeah. Yeah, and the common, like, the math common assessments. You talk about not wanting to take one. Those are hardcore, yeah, because Park is. All right, so, school SMART goal number two. We, we moved away from the instructional block SMART goal, only in that we added a new one. So, we, my teachers still have the expectation that they spent, I think, three years working on components of the instructional block. So, it's in place, it's in every room, it's an expectation. We even did one training on how to write objectives this year. But, we started a new SMART goal number two, which is to look at questioning. With the increased rigor, you can see this quote I just put in right here, I'll just let you read it, it's mumble jumble if I read it. But, in a recent article in Ed Leadership, it sort of says, if you want to get to the type of learning that is required now, the first step you got to take is to ask better questions as a school. So, we are majorly focused on the types of questions we are asking. We have a book study, the entire staff has the same book. That's sort of our foundation, but we are by no mind, by no means reading it cover to cover. We're reading bits and pieces and then doing workshops where we work together. So, we've had five workshops on this so far. They're listed here. Understanding the questioning cycle, literal versus inferential versus metacognitive. Then, we had two where we use technology for them to actually be planning questions based on the reading and learning we've done. And then, just last week, we did our next workshop, number five, was on understanding the use of wait time and its impact on student responses. And so, we've been very focused on that. And, you know, I don't have data to show around this, but I, anecdotally, you know, I was in a room today and a kid was struggling through a question and you can, you can sense the instinct of a teacher, rightfully so, is to not have the kid uncomfortable, to get away from him, let him recover, you know? And instead, the teacher stuck with him, gave him more wait time, I'm going to let you think about it for a minute, told all the other kids be quiet, kid got the right answer, you know, it was like, it was just wait time perfectly used. So, I think that this is, people are thinking about it. And the focus on how to, how to do better questioning leads itself right into the common assessments. Because then, they're writing questions, so it all kind of ties in. I put down here in the last bullet, we've also implemented monthly walkarounds during which all teachers spend one block walking and watching other teachers teach. This was all, this is kind of a hard one to explain. We've gone, in a good way, like, we've, we've really tried to do something different with how we're doing this. I have led like, internal walkthroughs in three buildings now and I have fumbled through them because no matter what you do, they're hard to do. So, we've had a very successful start here, where once a month, teachers come into our admin conference room when that grade level's off, so we have 10 to 15 teachers there. I have a big grid on the wall. They get in pairs that they want to travel with, they sign up for two classes they're going to go visit, they have a form they bring, and we just completely tailor it on what can you steal? That's what it's called, what can you steal? And we, we play a different song every month that has to do with walking, when they walk in, so they like, try to rev them up a bit, we're, you know, trying everything and.
I was there for walking in sunshine.
Yeah, that was a good one. Walk like Egyptian is March, that's going to go over well. So, they go out and then they have to come back and they have to report, what did you see that you can steal? What can you steal? And so, it, we are not giving at this point, any feedback to the teachers that got visited and, because, because everybody does visit. So, everything is about, I just walked around and in a profession where we never watch each other do what it is we do, that's how I frame it. Every other profession, people watch each other do what it is they do. Even when I coach, I'm watching another coach every time I coach. So, that's sort of our thing. Let's go watch each other and let's see what happens. And then, they have to report out on some stuff they've stolen. So, it has, I kind of wondered how it would take and it, after three months, it's just sort of part of what we do, which is exactly what we hoped for, exactly what we hoped for.
Any sense, any sense of anxiety on the teachers that are being observed? Because you're not reporting back.
Yeah, no, so, we did, we, I left out how we set it up, but we spent two or three months setting this up, where, again, me making mistakes in other places helped me understand how it should run better. PAC was involved, my department, so, I sort of figured it out and then I went to the department chairs and said, here's what I'm thinking. And I had like, three or four things I needed decisions on, they helped me make them. Then, I went to PAC and said, here's where we've landed, how do you feel about this? Now, you've got 15 teachers in the room. So, by the time we did it for the first time, it was like, any anxiety had already been felt, dealt with and.
Because it was just the observing, it's new, you're all being observed by your peers and told to steal.
Yeah.
So, I mean, just the, the, the theory is great.
Yeah.
But, in all actuality, I don't want a teacher looking over his shoulder because, you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah.
And that's why I said, is there stress or an anxiety level?
There, you know, one question that came back was, I just saw a teacher that teaches a grade after me do this incredible game that had the kids so engaged and was, and was good learning. But, I'm not sure I want to, I should steal that because I don't want to steal his or her thunder. So, I said, that's perfect, that's the conversation. You just go to them and just say like, this is what I'm thinking, what, what do you think? And then, they work it out from there, so.
So, it's subject to subject, like a math, just looking at a math teacher or?
It's their choice. Yeah, it's their choice. So, a lot of them, like, like math teachers, I've noticed a lot of people will go like, see one math and then they'll go see like, art. Because they'll say, I want to see something totally different, I want to open my mind to some things. Literally, the 20 minutes or the 10 to 15 minutes where we debrief is just awesome because they, like, the first time, they all saw these different seating arrangements, you know, and, and I, which was great, but I was still trying to work them into like, you know, and then, the next time, like, it was totally different. It was all different instructional moves and so, it's been, it's been a really strong process. One more anxiety we got to deal with is they pick where they go. So, I've monitored each trip because eventually, I'm going to tell them where they go because I don't want teachers that don't get visited to feel, yeah, yeah. So, that, we, yeah, we thought that all out. So, by the fourth one, I, that's when I've said, I'm going to start to tell you where you go, so, and, and they're, you know, they're fine with that.
Because you've got a level playing field.
Yeah.
And now, they've all been through the debriefing session, so they know what that entails. So, in terms of what's being produced and what's being captured in terms of what they've stolen.
I have to say that the discussions in the hallway are awesome.
Yeah.
Because not only have I participated where we've had one teacher and I pair up and we go to different classrooms, but then, you're bumping into the other teams and so, you're hearing what they're talking about and they're asking you, what did you just see?
Yeah. Trying to break down the walls.
And, you know, we're very competitive, so we didn't share with them. We had the best sharing moment, but it's really pretty incredible.
So, then, school SMART goal number three is safe, nurturing, respectful environment. I, for the sake of time, if it's okay, I won't go through all these bullets, but, I mean, Mr. Martin and I and the entire school, we're focused on this all the time. We had our TELMA survey last year and we had a lot of really positive feedback. One place where we saw some need for improvement was in differentiating PD. So, this year, that's all we've done. And every time we do it, we announce why we're doing it. So, you know, we showed them the positive data, you know, 98% of people felt like the school had a common mission, you know, all these great stats. But then, we also said, but here's where we can work. And Mr. Connor and I got to do better at getting you the PD you feel you need. Our parent surveys were very, very positive. So, we've just kind of continued the course with them, which is just continual communication, really being strong on the bullying issues and making sure we, we get ahead of whatever we can get ahead of. So, and then, is there one more survey I'm not thinking of?
Student exit surveys.
Oh, our student exit surveys, yeah, you know, again, it just, it was very positive data, so, I don't want to pretend I've made a new plan. What I've said is, let's stay the course and then, you know, you, a lot of, you've all been in leadership, like, year two for leaders is very different from year one and year three is going to be very different. So, we stay on the same page with making sure that the things that were working, we maintain and don't get lazy on. I will point out that, you know, our whole school has had the focus on the H2O for Life fundraising. That has just been amazing. There was a good article in the Reminder about it last week. Caught me in a hoodie. Burchland hoodie. We've raised over 3,500 bucks so far. We got some big events coming up. I really hope we can get a big turnout for March 5th. I don't know if you've seen the commercial on LCAT, but they got me chasing a meatball all around the school.
Pasta dinner.
Pasta dinner, yeah. Which, which shouldn't be a deterrent. You should still come. You should still come. We have a big social media awareness focus that Mr. Martin and the counselors have led. We've had an outside group come in and teach all three grade levels about social media and what they need to be aware of and these different things like Snapchat and how the kids think pictures leave after eight seconds, then it gets hacked, all the pictures still exist. So, we, we've, that's been a focus. Our counselors have been a big part of the leadership of the youth safety night. So, we have a lot of positive things going on and we just try to maintain that and maintain the positive attitude. I think that's it.
Dr. Allen's couple, she's looking at key messages from November. Did you get all four of them?
He doesn't remember.
You save us some time, I won't. Get them all.
Good, thank you.
Why isn't Mr. Martin like, the tech guru of the system now or something? He got certainly pushed into the video making. I don't know if we can give him the stats of tech guru.
I just, I, I'm a little disappointed. Last night was the Academy Awards, not once was my name mentioned. I put in a lot of effort this year, I was kind of hoping I'd be recognized, but.
He does claim to take the best notes in the leadership team.
It's, it's not a claim, I mean, that's just.
It's a fact.
Wow, it's a fact.
Come on, you got to get your facts right.
I guess.
I don't know, how do I disconnect? Walk out?
Just unplug and walk away. I do appreciate you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Oh, you know, there's one more thing in case you get questions. Today, we sent home 70 permission slips for a math after-school program. So, it's, it's, it's students that still need extra work with math. It's two hours a week for the 10 weeks between now and the Park end-of-year assessment. So, it's, you know, it's happening at all three grade levels. It's 70 permission slips went home. You know, I have teachers teaching it, we're using Title I funding. So, like I said, we're throwing everything at the math wall that we can and this is sort of the last round. So, just in case you get questions in the community, that's what it is.
Voluntary, right?
It's voluntary for the parents, yeah, and for the kids, yeah. So, they're chosen based on, you know, the need. And then, we're hoping, we sent home more permission slips than we thought seats we needed to fill. So, but we're hoping we have a good turnout. And it's two hours, it's another two hours a week of math instruction, so, just in case some of you will get questions.
Is that voluntary by the teachers or?
No, we're using, we're using our Title I money to pay for it, yeah. So.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you. It's Mr. Martin's birthday and his wife's waiting at a restaurant.
Oh.
Happy birthday.
He didn't tell anybody at school.
Taking a personal day tomorrow? Connor, is that your bag here or is that yours too?
Oh, yes, someone's backpack.
Thanks, guys.
Happy birthday dinner.
Bye-bye.
Thank you, Mrs. Deere.
I'll have the remotes there for it.
Okay.
So, do we need to take a motion just accepting those in a second? Okay, so, perfect.
Cool. We'll finish up next meeting with the elementary and in that same meeting, we'll do my bit cycle.
Oh, wow.
Exciting stuff.
Wow. Running along here.
I know. All right, so, moving down onto old business, we have 6.1, our school committee evaluation. Do you want me to talk that?
Well, just, certainly, it was a discussion last time, Mr. Thompson was not with us, so we wanted to make sure we brought this back. It's a self-evaluation, it gives you areas that are all within the school committee's responsibility and authority and something that the MAC had put together, I believe, last year. year.
And, something that came up for discussion last time was when we would do something like this? And would we think, would the end of the school year be good, so that we have it sort of going into the new term or new year? Probably.
The end of our term, so someone's term is up, should we do it before, so should we do it now, or March, before we have a new committee? Because considerably, you could have two new members in any given March, one or two.
Right. But if they're gone, then their evaluation is gonna matter, and then the new ones can see how we perform the evaluation, and not have the new people do it, but they can, or they can do it as a...
Well, then you're only getting three evaluations instead of five, though. I'm open to either way, I'm just hesitant. Whatever you want to do.
I know, but...
Or do we just, or do we just wait to see how it goes year by year, as opposed to doing something that's hardcore? I mean, I personally think it would be better, I think it'd be more effective at the end of the year, but I understand what Greg's saying, at the end of the term, but, I mean, that's just something I think that has to be taken into consideration, because it's for the betterment of the committee as a whole, so, it's a learning, it's a learning tool.
Right.
So I think it still would be better at the end of the year, and we just have to deal with if the committee change, or when the committee changes.
Because we're not gonna have a change really over this year, right? Unless there's a...
You said we are, and I said so.
Yeah. So, but like next year, there might be, and then maybe we'll decide in January, February, okay, it needs to be done by the beginning of April.
Or, do you do it, once we get it started, do you do it in, let's say, January of next year before the, if, to eliminate?
Before a change.
The change.
Okay.
Right, that's what I mean, before the change.
But you're...
Because maybe they may not be, but if you get in the same cycle.
But if you're doing April, it's a time of change, because that's when the elections are. So you'd want to do it at any point before that, so you're...
So, yeah, January, February, I mean, if you do January, February, at least you have some time to decipher the data and come up with a plan, and then if it changes, since you've had the discussion already, so...
Yeah.
But for this year, we do it at the end, because the committee won't change.
Right, and there's the...
And then we do it again...
In January.
Well, we can talk about it, but January, February, that's fine with me.
That's fine.
I don't want to do it. I don't see the need for it, but obviously, I would go on with my...
Well, I mean, it goes back to what, you know, it will tell us if we need professional development, primarily.
Yeah, I think, no one is evaluating us, per se, so I think it's a self-evaluation, it does just that, it helps us to see areas that we need to be...
Are there areas that you need to improve?
I know you don't want to do this.
Every chip stains.
Okay, cool. End of the year, fine.
Okay. Are we gonna vote on that, or we're just...
No, I think we can just do it.
We're just gonna do it. All right, so we'll keep it for the end of the year. All right, sounds good. All right, so moving on, we have six point two, our warrant article for community preservation funding for the elementary school playground equipment.
Yes, and actually, I checked with Mr. Kingston, and he has submitted both draft warrant articles to Nick Bro, town administrator, so it's ready for the warrant, March 2nd meeting, they will be voting to recommend, hopefully, that, you know, so the community preservation committee would actually recommend the warrant articles, we would present the warrant articles...
Their meeting is March 2nd?
No, March 3rd, it's Tuesday.
So that's why they, I'm sorry, March 2nd is the deadline, which is why the warrant articles are in there, so the drafts are in there, have already been submitted, and Mr. Kingston met with the capital planning committee, and capital planning voted unanimously to endorse and recommend those two warrant articles.
Now, you say two, that's for each one individually?
Right.
They broke it down into two dollar amounts.
Yeah, thank you.
So should we, as a committee, also endorse and recommend both?
Well, we submitted one application, and it was the community preservation that split it up.
Right.
But even though it was one application...
It doesn't matter how they do it, what I'm saying, should we endorse and recommend both of those warrants?
Right, and we actually are going to have to present them.
Right. But if we do that now, then the selectmen know for their March 2nd meeting.
Okay.
One more, I think we should maybe see if we can get appropriations to back us on this, too. I mean...
Yeah, no, I mean, they'll have, I think they typically have a recommendation on any four against any dollar amount warrant article, so I would think, yes, they would...
Perhaps we should mention it to them tomorrow night?
Yeah, we'll talk to them, it's worth, yeah.
We'll just put it out there.
Yep, I agree with it. Might as well let everybody know what we're looking for.
Right.
I think they'll be happy for that if it's applicable.
Right, well, I did speak with Eric Madison, and he does know that we put this out, and I did make a call to him to let him know that we did present it to community preservation, he was glad that we did that, and very happy. So, we will mention it tomorrow night.
So I move that we, as a committee, endorse and recommend the two warrant articles for the elementary playground equipment being funded through community preservation funds.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any further discussion? Okay, here...
And that we just pass it along to the board of selecting that we've done so before their warrant second deadline. Okay? If we do so, thank you.
All right, so we're gonna vote on it, so all those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed nay. And that carries forward, five to zero. Thank you very much.
Nice job following up on it, because I know they recommended it to it on a capital planning basis, and I didn't think it was valid, so I'm glad you followed up, and it's the same may actually happen, so, thank you for doing that.
Yes, May, you got right on that, girl. I did, because I want to see the playgrounds at our schools.
You know, it's not, it's not just for the school age kids, it's for anybody. It's community, so there's no reason not to.
And definitely going forward, I'd like to see something at Meadowbrook, right? But that one would be, you know...
One step at a time.
That's exactly how we phrase it, that like that, we just want to take it one step at a time.
Absolutely no reason we can't go back.
Okay, so we're moving on to our new business, we have seven point one, a Burchland Park eighth grade field trip to High Meadow.
So in your packet, you have a memo to me from Dr. Allen describing the High Meadow field trip, which is their eighth grade end-of-year field trip, and then you have a further breakdown that's much more specific by Mrs. Fiancini around what the cost would be, you have roughly two hundred students going, the entire eighth grade, you have approximately twenty chaperones going as well, and it gives you the cost per student, as well as how many buses they're taking, cost per bus, and then they do also bring a nurse along.
Now, this email was in our mailboxes.
Yeah, from...
From, changing, changing the amount, actually identifying eight to ten chaperones.
Ten chaperones, all right, so it's incorrect, isn't it?
Yep, and the price of this, price is fifty-one dollars per student, not fifty-three, as said.
Actually, they have forty-one here.
Well, I'm looking at fifty-three, the estimated cost.
The cost, not the number.
Yeah, fifty-one.
Fifty-one is the bottom, okay. There's a donation from the PTO, all right.
So that's an updated one, I don't have that.
And it was just, okay, the two hundred students is in here.
Okay.
So I move that we approve the Burchland Park eighth grade field trip to High Meadow kindergarten dedicated January 5th, 2015.
Okay, motion's made.
Seconded.
And seconded, Fred. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed nay. That carries forward, five to zero. Okay, we have seven point two, Meadowbrook kindergarten field trip.
Okay, again, in your packet, you have a letter addressed to me from Mrs. Dakin recommending this field trip to the Science Center, and this would be our kindergarten classrooms going down, so roughly a hundred and sixty-five kindergarten students, eight teachers, twelve paras, and this is amazing to me, forty-five parent volunteers.
Well, you have that many kindergarteners coming, it's like corralling cats.
Right. So that's quite a number of volunteers.
Part of it is you can't keep the parents out of it, I was destroyed at the mouth, you kids don't want us. I'm like, what?
So, the cost of the trip is approximately eighteen dollars per student.
And the bussing, are they using our buses?
I believe they have gone through us, but I don't know if we're able to do it, because generally, the return trip is right when we have to do our...
Kindergarten classes?
Yes.
Even the...
Half-day?
Half-day ones?
I believe so.
And also just say, I'm pretty sure if it stands the way it's been, the majority of the parent volunteers take their own vehicle.
I hope so.
Just, I'm just letting you know that, you know, just so people don't think we're bussing four hundred people over there. It's usually how it is, there might be a few that go on the bus.
Well, I move that we approve the Meadowbrook kindergarten field trip, Connecticut Science Museum on March 9th, 2015.
Okay, motion made.
Second.
Up second.
Okay.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed nay. Carries forward, five to zero.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have seven point three, a high school Latin field trip.
Okay, so this is actually a little bit different field trip, this is actually, yeah, a little further away, this is similar to what the Latin group did last year, where they go abroad during April vacation, and as you not only have the endorsement letter from Dr. Flanagan, you also have a breakdown from Ms. Faulkner, our Latin teacher, who actually was here before the meeting, gives you an idea of what they planned to tour, gives you a breakdown of the standards, and it also gives you a breakdown that they are joining other high schools that will be going on this trip specifically, I believe it's Long Meadow, Belcher Town, I think that might be it. Yeah. It is somewhat costly, it's three thousand and nine dollars, so, last year, I think there was a total of four students that went on the trip. This year, at the moment, we have no students on the trip, but if it's approved as a potential option, they certainly will start to advertise, but I wouldn't imagine that we would see too much of an increased path, maybe four or five students.
Right. I know, but it sounds like you do a lot, and you get a lot for that price of the trip.
Well, the trips are pretty spectacular, really, and the kids come back, I mean, they do it a lot each day. And Ms. Faulkner has done a pretty incredible job since she's been here at the high school.
And just so you know, on our agenda, the date was wrong, it's April 14th to 22nd, 2016, not two months, right, so...
Yeah, really.
So this is just the heads up of, this is what's been planning based on our timeframes, so she would have to come back to us for more details.
Yeah, she's gonna have to come back with more details.
Now, this would also entail losing school days, correct?
Just one, though.
Just one.
I checked and looked before she left.
I'm gonna say, you know, based on what's come before us, you know, in the past couple of, you know, couple meetings and everything, possibly the policy subcommittee getting together to look, look at our policy as far as travel goes, to make sure, because these trips are running into school days, and maybe we need just to tweak the policy to make sure that these students, and I'm not by any means deterring the students from traveling, we just need to make sure that they're not missing out on too much schoolwork, and that there's a plan in place, so that they can stay caught up. Okay? So, Beth, I think we should probably get together and look at that policy, and we'll coordinate with Beth, or with Gordon Terry.
And also looking, making sure that their students in good standing.
Right, academic standing and plans for making up work, as opposed to everything coming to us and having the same discussion, if we put it in a policy, we can point them to the policy saying, this is, these are our, these are our expectations, okay?
Okay. All right, so, should we get a motion on that, seven point three?
I move to approve the high school Latin field trip to Italy and Greece from April 14th through the 22nd of 2016.
Okay, motion made. Seconded and seconded, any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed nay. Carries forward, five to zero. Thank you. So we have seven point four, our school committee meeting dates for 2015 through 2016.
Basically, it's a similar schedule to what we've done in the past, so you see where holidays pop up, we move to a Tuesday, and we go through June, in some cases, each year during the budget cycle, we may add a meeting, sometimes in years past, we've added a meeting in June, depending on what, what business we need to take care of.
Right. Any conflicts?
I had a...
See, I knew you would have one. I'm like, all clear for me right now. It's fine, it's like the dentist.
September 8th may be a problem for me, but we'll see.
Which one?
September 8th.
We're always flexible, we work together, so...
We can talk about that, come on this.
I move to approve the school committee meeting dates for the year 2015, 2016.
A motion made?
Second.
And seconded, all right, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.